Let us pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for our gathering tonight. We pray that you will open our hearts and minds to your word, especially as we study these two important eye-opening chapters, telling us the story of David and Bathsheba. We believe you have many lessons to teach us from this story. So Lord, bless our time together, focus our minds, and make our time together count for you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Tonight, we're going to talk about David and Bathsheba. In 2 Samuel, chapter 11, we have a record of the tragic sins and moral failure of David, someone described by God as a man after his own heart. Even though this is a familiar story, I pray the Holy Spirit will reveal to us those things which we need to know so that we don't fall into the same mistakes that led David to commit the terrible sins. I'm going to start by reading the first five verses of chapter 11. 2 Samuel, chapter 11, the first five verses. "It happened in the year at the time when kings go out to battle that David sent Joab and his servants with him and all Israel, and they destroyed the people of Ammon and besieged Rabbah, but David remained at Jerusalem. Then it happened one evening that David arose from his bed and walked on the roof of the king's house, and from the roof he saw a woman bathing, and the woman was very beautiful to behold. So David sent and inquired about the woman, and someone said, 'Is this not Bathsheba, the daughter of Eliam, the wife of Uriah the Hittite? Then David sent messengers and took her, and she came to him, and he lay with her, for she was cleansed from her impurity. And she returned to her house, and the woman conceived. So she sent and told David and said, 'I am with child.' This, in the first five verses, we can see why David fell into sin just by reading the first five verses. The first reason can be found in verse 1. Instead of leading his army into battle, as he had always done, he stayed behind in Jerusalem. He abandoned fighting God's battle. What was happening to the man after God's own heart? One wonders what his relationship with God was at this time. He abandoned his purpose and became idle. And as an adage says, "The devil finds work for idle hands." He was at this time neglecting his responsibility towards God and was definitely outside the will of God. 2. As David was walking on the roof of his palace, he saw a beautiful woman bathing and eluded after her. Seeing the woman was not sin. After all, we see many things around us. But when we see things that can easily lead us to sinning against God, the earlier we quit gazing on that thing, the better for us. The Bible warns us to avoid sexual immorality. Unfortunately, one of David's weakest points was his inability to deal with unrestrained passion, failure to control his sexual desires. In 2 Samuel, chapter 5, verse 13, we read, "After moving from Hebron to Jerusalem, David married more wives and concubines." Even though Deuteronomy 17:17 has a warning from God against Israel's kings marrying many wives. So here, rather than run away from temptation, he went a step further to inquire about the beautiful lady. He made no effort to escape temptation. He should have taken the way of escape, but he didn't. 3. In verse 3, he sent and inquired about the woman. They told David who the woman was. Her name was Bathsheba. She was the wife of Uriah, one of David's mighty warriors, warriors who was actually fighting on the battlefield at that time. David should have regarded this information as enough warning from God. But no, David still sent for her and lay with her. Where was David's fear of God at that time? Where was his commitment to obey God's word? "Flee fornication; do not commit adultery." Was he thinking of what could come out of these few minutes of pleasure? Well, finally, we are told in verse 5, "The woman conceived. So she sent and told David and said, 'I am pregnant.'" David had used his authority as king to take advantage of Uriah's wife while he was fighting a war for Israel. It was now left for David to figure out how to cover his sin. But our sins are never hidden before God. What we need to do is to confess our sins to God and repent. Now let's read verses 6 to 17 of 2 Samuel, chapter 11. 2 Samuel, chapter 11, verses 6 to 17. "Then David sent to Joab, saying, 'Send me Uriah the Hittite.' And Joab sent Uriah to David. When Uriah came to him, David asked how Job was doing, Joab was doing, and how the people were doing, and how the war prospered. And David said to Uriah, 'Go down to your house and wash your feet.' And Uriah departed from the king's house, and a gift of food from the king followed him. But Uriah slept at the door of the high king's house with all the servants of his lord, and did not go down to his house. So when they told David, saying, 'Uriah did not go down to his house,' David said to Uriah, 'Did you not come from a journey? Why did you not go down to your house?' And Uriah said to David, 'The ark and Israel and Judah are dwelling in tents, and my lord Joab and the servants of my lord are encamped in the open fields. Shall I then go to my house to eat and drink and lie with my wife? As you live and as your soul lives, I will do no such thing.' Then David said to Uriah, 'Wait here today also, and tomorrow I will let you depart.' So Uriah remained in Jerusalem that day and the next. Now when David called him, he ate and drank before him, and he made him drunk. And at evening he went out to lie on his bed with the servants of his lord, but he did not go down to his house. In the morning, it happened that David wrote a letter to Joab and sent it by the hand of Uriah. And he wrote in the letter, saying, 'Search Uriah in the forefront of the hottest battle and retreat from him, that he may be struck down and die.' So it was, while Joab besieged the city, that he assigned Uriah a place where he knew there were valiant men. Then the men of the city came out and fought with Joab, and some of the people of the servants of David fell, and Uriah the Hittite died also. After Bathsheba had informed David that she was pregnant, the first thing he did was to ask Joab to send him Uriah. He thought that if Uriah came to Jerusalem, he would at least go down to his own house to see his wife. But things didn't work out the way David had thought. When Uriah arrived from the war front, David asked him how the war was progressing. After that, he encouraged him to go and see his wife. He even sent a gift of food after Uriah for him and his wife to enjoy together and be intimate. But Uriah did not go home. He slept at the door of the palace with all the other servants. When David asked why he did not go down to his house, Uriah said to the king, 'The ark and Israel and Judah are dwelling in tents, and my lord Joab and the servants of my lord were encamped in the open field. Shall I then go to my house to eat and drink and lie with my wife? As you live and as your soul lives, I will not do this thing.' This answer from a gallant soldier shows that Uriah was a man of honor and integrity, at least more honorable than David at this time. David's second attempt to make Uriah to go to his house after he had eaten and was made drunk by David also failed, for Uriah again slept with the servants. This made David embark on his murderous plan. He wrote a letter to Joab asking him to put Uriah in the forefront of the hottest battle and retreat from him so that he could be killed. The letter was given to Uriah to deliver to Joab. How kiles could David be? He was so desperate to have his sin covered that he did not mind committing an act of murder against one of his most loyal and mightiest men of war. Uriah could never imagine, he could never have imagined that he was carrying his own death warrant. Although the king's order would have surprised Joab, nevertheless, he carried out the order, and Uriah was killed. After this, Joab sent a messenger to tell David about the war, including the fact that Uriah the Hittite was dead. Listen to David's insensitive response to the death of one of his mighty men of war, a loyal servant and a man of integrity. He showed no grief for Uriah. David had become kiles to his own sin. In verse 25, he said, "Well, tell Joab not to be displeased." And David said that. "The sword kills one as well as another. Strengthen your attack against the city and overthrow it." Obviously, David was relieved to hear that Uriah was dead. He must have thought to himself, "My sin is covered at last." But he was mistaken, as we shall see. Bathsheba also must have heaved a sigh of relief. She mourned for her husband. And after mourning, David took her to his house to become his wife. The last sentence of verse 27 of chapter 11 says, "But the thing that David had done displeased the Lord." None of his sinful activities was hidden from the Lord. He saw them all, for the ways of men are before the Lord, and he ponders all his paths." Proverbs 5:21. Proverbs 5:21. Also, Hebrews 4:13 says, "And there is no creature hidden from his sight, that is, from God's sight; but all things are naked and open to the eyes of him to whom we must give account." What do you think David's relationship with God? What do you think it was like at this time when he committed his sins of adultery and murder and tried to cover up his sin? Psalm 32 gives us an insight into what he was feeling. Psalm 32, I'm just going to read verses 1 to 5. Psalm 32, verses 1 to 5. "Blessed is he whose transgression is forgiven, whose sin is covered. Blessed is the man to whom the Lord does not impute iniquity and in whose spirit there is no deceit. When I kept silent, my bones grew old, through my groaning all day long. For day and night your hand was heavy upon me; my vitality was turned into the drought of summer." And then, after he had acknowledged his sin, he pulls verse 5, "I acknowledge my sin to you, and my iniquity I have not hidden. I said, 'I will confess my transgressions to the Lord, and you forgive the iniquity of my sin.'" Verse 3 says, "When I kept silent, my bones grew old, through my groaning all the day long; for day and night your hand was heavy upon me." So that was how he was feeling at the time when he was trying to cover up his sin. Later on, we will read a little bit of Psalm 51, which he composed after Nathan had confronted him. So now, let us read 2 Samuel 12:1 to 6. 2 Samuel 12:1 to 6, Nathan's parable and David's confession. "Then the Lord sent Nathan to David, and he came to him and said, 'There were two men in one city, one rich and the other poor. The rich man had exceedingly many flocks and herds; but the poor man had nothing except one little ewe lamb, which he had bought and nourished; and it grew up with him and with his children. It ate of his food and drank from its own cup and lay in his bosom; and it was like a daughter to him. And a reviler came to the rich man, who refused to take, and he refused to take from his own flock and from his own heart, to prepare one for the wayfarer who had come to him. He took the poor man's lamb and prepared it for the man who had come to him.' So David's anger was greatly aroused against the man, and he said to Nathan, 'As the Lord lives, the man who has done this shall surely die; and he shall restore fourfold for the lamb, therefore, because he did this thing and because he had no pity, because he had no pity.'" Let me remind us about the Lord's reaction to David's sin in the last sentence of chapter 11. It says that the thing that David had done displeased the Lord. So he sent prophet Nathan to David. David's sins were all the more serious because he was a leader and protector over God's people. The king was responsible for providing justice for others. 2 Samuel, chapter 8, verse 15. 2 Samuel 8:15 says, "And David reigned over all Israel; and David executed judgment and justice unto all the people. It was not until about a year later that Nathan went to confront David." Nathan's job as a prophet was to confront sin, even the sin of a king. It required courage, wisdom, and tact to speak to David in a way that would make him aware of how wrong his actions had been. So he addressed the king by using a parable. Nathan's story was simple but powerful. There were two men living in a city. One was rich and the other poor. The rich man had many sheep and cattle, while the poor man had only one pet lamb, which grew with his children, ate from his plate, and drank from his cup. The rich man had a guest, and instead of killing a lamb from his own flock to entertain his visitor, he took the poor man's only lamb, killed it, and served it to his guest. Nathan's story was one that David could easily relate to, but he would never have thought that it was a story that could make him pass judgment on himself. Verse 5 says, "So David's anger was greatly aroused against the man, and he said to Nathan, 'As the Lord lives, and he shall restore fourfold, the man who has done this shall surely die; and he shall restore fourfold for the lamb, because he did this thing, because he had no pity.'" Now let's go on and read verses 7 to 12 of chapter 12, 7 to 12. "Then Nathan said to David, 'You are the man. Thus saith the Lord God of Israel, 'Anointed you king over Israel; I delivered you from the hand of Saul; I gave you your master's house and your master's wives into your keeping, and gave you the house of Israel and Judah; and if that had been too little, I also would have given you much more. Why have you despised the commandment of the Lord to do evil in his sight? You have killed Uriah the Hittite with a sword; you have taken his wife to be your wife, and have killed him with the sword of the people of Ammon. Now therefore, the sword shall never depart from your house, because you have despised me; and I have taken the wife of Uriah the Hittite to be your wife. Thus saith the Lord. Behold, I will raise up adversity against you from your own house; and I will take your wives before your eyes and give them to your neighbor; and he shall lie with your wives in the sight of the sun; for you did it secretly; but I will do this thing before all Israel, before the sun.'" So David said to Nathan, "I have sinned against the Lord." And Nathan said to David, "The Lord also has put away your sin. You shall not die. However, because by this deed you have given great occasion to the enemies of the Lord to blaspheme, the child also who is born to you shall surely die." Then Nathan departed to his own house. Nathan said to David, "You are the man." Nathan must have summoned a lot of courage to speak out those four words, "You are the man." I can imagine how shocked David must have been to hear those words. "I am the man?" How? He must have wondered. The fact is that most of us are blind to our own sins while we are quick to judge other people for the same sin that we are guilty of. For instance, David had many wives, and instead of taking, satisfying his sexual desires with one of them, he didn't. Rather, he took Uriah's only wife and committed adultery with her, and later took her in as his wife. He was condemning the rich man as lacking compassion. How much compassion did he show to Uriah by committing adultery with his wife and killing him? David was quick to pass his judgment. "The man who has done this shall surely die." By the time God has finished with David, he saw himself for who he was, a sinner. "I have sinned against the Lord," he said. That was confession. As a matter of fact, he composed Psalm 51 after Nathan had confronted him. Let's just read a few of those, a few verses from that Psalm. Psalm 51, I'm going to read verses 1 to 4 and 10 to 12. Psalm 51. It says at the top, "To the chief musician, a psalm of David, when Nathan the prophet went to him after he had gone into Bathsheba." "Have mercy upon me, O God, according to your loving kindness; according to the multitude of your tender mercies blot out my transgressions; wash me thoroughly from my iniquity and cleanse me from my sin; for I acknowledge my transgressions, and my sin is always before me. Against you, you only have I sinned and done this evil in your sight, that you may be found just when you speak and blameless when you judge." Verse 10, "Create in me a clean heart, O God, and renew a steadfast spirit within me. Do not cast me away from your presence, and do not take your Holy Spirit from me; restore to me the joy of your salvation and uphold me by your general spirit." That was David's confession. "And Nathan said to him, 'The Lord has put away your sin; you shall not die.'" That was forgiveness. But forgiveness does not mean there won't be consequences. In fact, David's sins were far-reaching, far-reaching, affecting many others. In fact, David's sins were far reaching, far reaching, affecting many others. David seemed to have forgotten the goodness of God. Listen to what God said to him. We go back to 2 Samuel. He seems to have forgotten God's goodness, for the Lord said to him, I anointed you king of Israel; I delivered you from the hand of Saul; I gave you your master's house and your master's wives into your keeping, and gave you the house of Israel and Judah. God was saying, have you forgotten all the things that I have done for you? Has David forgotten God's goodness? That we find in verses seven to eight. And then God said, you've despised my commandment to do evil in my sight. You killed Uriah, and you took his wife. And of course, the consequences. The sword shall never depart from your house. I will raise adversity against you from your own house. These came to pass, as we shall see. And Absalom's full sister. Absalom killed his brother, and Adonijah, Adonijah during the time of Solomon. Oh, Adonijah was also David's son, he was also killed by Solomon. So we can see that the consequences came to pass. Verse fourteen says, because by this deed, you have given great occasion to the enemies of the Lord to blaspheme; the child also who is born to you shall surely die. The son died, but because God is gracious and full of compassion, he gave David and Bathsheba another son, and he called his name Solomon. And because God loved him, he sent another name through Nathan. The name that he sent through Nathan was Jedidiah. Jedidiah means beloved of the Lord. How gracious God can be. This was the final symbol of God's forgiveness in the lives of David and Bathsheba, even as Solomon became the heir to David's throne. Aren't we glad that we have a God who forgives our iniquities? Psalm one oh three, verse two. He says to us in Hebrews eight twelve, I will be merciful to their unrighteousness and their sins and their lawless deeds; I will remember their sins no more. Yes, God forgives sins, but it does not eliminate consequences. Let us pray. Father, we thank you for how far you have taken us through this lesson of today. We have learned a lot from this, and we are believing you, Father, that you will help us to avoid temptation. Temptation itself is no sin, but it becomes sin when we yield to temptation. Father, keep us from sinning against you. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. Yes, are we going to discuss anything? Yes. For everybody. For everybody. Yeah. You think the child was being punished? Exactly. I think that child was a product of adultery. And that stain would never leave David. And then that would also give unbelievers, or well, others to blaspheme God, even just as he has said. Yes, does anybody want to add to that? Yes.